City Council Tuesday, December tenth, twenty nineteen. We do have a quorum. We have Paul Vandevere from Lakewood Christian Church here leads in the pledge and implications. Do I just go to Mike?
Say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Father, thank you for tonight. Thank you for these men and women who have stepped up to lead. God, I ask for wisdom as they decide what's best. God, you have the perspective you know, and so I ask that you would give us your perspective. God, thank you for tonight. While we love you, thank you for loving us. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Corr, would you call the roll please?
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Pritchard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. Citizens comments on non-agenda items. We had no one sign up tonight and I don't see anybody in the audience. So we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be retained by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. Discussion is desired. That item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, the agenda consists of A, approval of minutes from the November twelfth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting of McAllister City Council. B, approval of claims for November twentieth, twenty nineteen through December third, twenty nineteen. C, consider an act upon receipt of permit number SL zero 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 six one one nine oh eight seven seven from the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for the construction of two thousand one hundred seventeen linear feet of sanitary sewer line and all the apartments, appartements, appartenances for the twenty nineteen CDBG sewer line project. And D, consider an act upon a two hundred and fifty dollar one-time net pay for all full and part-time regular employees. Would anyone like anything removed?
Mayor? Not anything removed. I was looking under the Department of Environmental Quality letter. And maybe is this supposed to be addressed to Steve Harrison, Mayor?
I'm sure it's just a.
I'm just looking at these. Yeah, it still says Steve Harrison. That's what I.
And and we've sent several notifications and letters to the Department of Environmental Quality. Trying to make that change.
I go with if it's if it's something good, it should be Mayor Brown. If it's something, it's fine to keep it in Mr. Harrison. Yeah, so would anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda? In that case, they take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Brown, any discussion? Corr, would you call the roll please?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll move to a public hearing. All persons interested in any ordinance listed under schedule business shall have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article Two, Section one, two, one, two B of the city charter. The hearing tonight is an ordinance of the city of McAllister, Oklahoma, amending McAllister City Code, Chapter sixty-two, land development, planning, zoning, and subdivisions. Article four, Division two, the uses permitted after review for Section sixty-two dash two five five R one A, single-family residential district. Section sixty-two dash two five six R one B, single-family residential district. Section sixty-two, two five eight R two, two-family dwelling districts. And Section sixty-two, two five nine R three, multiple-family dwelling district, amending the development standards of Section sixty-two, two seven four cottage house development overlay district and repealing all conflicting ordinances. Take a motion in a second to go into public hearing. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Corr, would you call the roll please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we're now in the public hearing. If anyone would like to address the council, seeing no one, they take a motion in a second to close the hearing. Motion, Councilman Reed. Second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Corr, would you call the roll please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and motion carries. We're on to agenda item number one. Consider an act upon an ordinance amended McAllister City Code, Chapter sixty-two, land development, planning, zoning, subdivisions, Article four, Division two, the use permitted after review for Section six-two, two-five R one A, single-family residential district. Section sixty-two dash two five six R one B, single-family residential district. Section sixty-two, two five eight R two, two-family dwelling district. And Section sixty-two, two five nine R three, multiple-family dwelling district, amending development standards of Section six-two, two seven four cottage house development overlay district and repealing all conflicting ordinances. Ms. Clifton?
Good evening. So I bring before you an amendment to an ordinance for the cottage house developments. As you recall, a little over a year ago, the Planning Commission and City Council passed an ordinance for an overlay district. This ordinance before you is to kind of expand on that type of development, and it's allowing it as a use permit after review in all the other residential districts within the city of McAllister. It will retain the overlay district that is there, and they go through administrative review of those development standards that they have to meet. And then on the use permit after review, the applicant would go through notice and public hearing and everything, as with any other use permit after review, to approve a cottage house development in any other residential area in the city of McAllister. So I've included the draft ordinance and the the proof of publications for the notices that were published throughout this process, because we did start this back in August, and it came back to Planning Commission a couple of times. And also the agenda and minutes to kind of bring you up to date with the information that was reviewed in those Planning Commission meetings. So the Planning Commission on November nineteenth voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend the approval of this ordinance.
Okay, just just for people who may not be aware, could you just briefly give the give the overview of what a cottage house development would be or is?
It's it allows for a collection of houses on a half-acre parcel, and they will have shared yards or parking, but it's kind of more of a community-type housing setting.
And the idea is to be able to get more living spaces on a on a smaller piece of property.
Yes, that's correct.
Individually?
Yes.
Any any questions or comments? Councilwoman Harrison?
Where is the exact location of the cottage development?
It would be anywhere that there is residential zoning in the city of McAllister. So they would go through use permit after review process and go before the Planning Commission and council to have it approved.
Yeah, this isn't for a particular project.
Oh, okay. It's future something that's going to happen.
Councilman Pritchard?
There is the there is the existing. Existing, what's it called? The cottage?
Overlay.
The overlay. Yes.
That won't go away as a result of this, will it?
No, it will not go away. The overlay district will remain.
Where is that roughly?
It's kind of in the southwest quadrant of the city of McAllister, south of Carl Albert and west of Main Street.
Good old Third Ward. Any other questions, comments? Uh, council, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Stevens?
I would like to make a motion to approve it, but I would also like to make an emotion at the same time to remove the use permitted after review. And my reasoning being for that is that this is already an entirely cumbersome process to go through to get something rezoned. Last time we had this discussion about this, it pertained more to the idea that we don't want more renters. From what I recall, some of the councilmen that were in that discussion and said those comments aren't here anymore. So I'm not going to say that they were saying anything negative per se, but there seems to be a strong prejudice against renters and things like that in our community. And just reading through this at the the different planning zoning notes and everything, just in reading through when someone was trying to get something rezoned for a duplex a little bit earlier, that met all the criteria, unless I'm wrong, Ms. Clifton. It did meet all the criteria, but it was entirely shot down just because the neighborhood didn't want it. It had nothing to do with it's not needed, nothing to do with it won't be nice. It was I don't want renters next to my house. I think if we add in the use permitted after review, I think we're going to make it extremely difficult to see anything like this. And with our comprehensive plan, and this is really where that comes from too, with our comprehensive plan, our community's already told us they want things like this. I don't see any reason to have to go through a use permitted after review.
Is is there any? Is there anything in between? No, no review and absolute review, is there?
I I think it still is reviewed and approved by city staff.
The overlay district is reviewed and approved administratively. There's not a public hearing or public notice or anything that would go through. The use permit after review was what the Planning Commission had recommended, and it's kind of a way to do incremental growth or incremental development and still retain, you know, some level of oversight, I guess, with, you know, the development. So when you get close to, you know, some subdivisions that it may not work in, I think that's what some of their concerns were or, you know, just, you know, with those covenants or, you know, the way that it's laid out.
And and I understand that, but those covenants are in the subdivision, and that's guided by the neighbors, the neighbors and the developer. The neighbors and the developer, if they don't want that in there, and it's in their covenants that they can't have that many homes on a on a lot and different things, then that's already legally set precedent. I think as a council and the city staff, I think they're more than capable to judge four, five, six, three, two existing or brand-new builds and infill development. I mean, part of the the thing that I think is so great about this is that it's going to be mainly infill development is what I would see for it. And then you're going to end up having, where we already have existing liabilities with sewer and water and trash and streets, we're going to be able to take and put, you know, minimum of four new structures in there. Why why make it any more difficult to see that be done? So that's why I make that recommendation for no other reason than we have city staff here to do this. It's a I appreciate what the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended with that, but I think it's it's wholly unneeded.
Would this would this have to go back to planning and zoning since of the potential that?
I don't believe so, because they're making a recommendation. It's up to the council to approve an ordinance. We can just as easily amend.
I I guess.
No, I mean, that that's.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that that seems to be my understanding of any time we've done an ordinance that's been recommended to us. We can amend it here and vote it through. So that's why I make that recommendation the way it is for that very reason.
Councilman Reed?
Mayor, I I I don't agree with Vice Mayor Stevens. I I think the I think the neighbors have every right to voice their opinion as to whether or not they want this type of development next to their properties. The final say-so comes down to this council. But if you if you change this, then the citizens really have no no vote other than to to replace that council member. If I own property in in someplace, I'd like to have say-so about something that was going to come in that that may or may not affect my property value. And let the the city staff and Planning Commission and developer convince me that it won't have a negative impact on my property. I don't see why it hurts. It puts it puts an extra step in there, but it certainly doesn't prevent this type of housing to go in. But it does en- ensure that the neighborhood and the property owners have a say-so as to whether or not it's going to happen. That's the whole purpose of after-review action. If if you're not going to allow the citizens to do that, we should just do away with after-review and everything. That's that's there to give the citizens an opportunity to say, we don't want this in our neighborhood, whatever that happens to be. You know, like I said, the the city council has the final say. They want to go ahead and prove if they can.
Mayor?
Councilman Brown?
So Ms. Clifton told me a little bit, uh, I guess about this in there. Have you guys had some problems with this?
No, actually, we have not had any developments that have come to us, you know, for this type of development. There was an interest to expand these type of developments elsewhere in the city of McAllister. So that's the reason why for the changes. And then there were some small tweaks to the development, you know, standards for those, you know, type of developments as well. But the the largest part of it is the use permit after review and the other residentially zoned districts.
So basically, it's a neighbor, somebody don't want something in there, they can protest it and come to you guys, or you send it to Planning Commission.
With the use permit after review, yes, all property owners within three hundred foot would receive a notice, and then they would have an opportunity to either express their opposition or support for that type of development.
Okay, and so what the Vice Mayor is getting at there is, is there some kind of hang-up that maybe people can be discriminated against based on that?
There are times that it's it's kind of a it's an uphill battle to be able to get multifamily zoning done. And in some cases, the two-family dwelling. We've experienced, you know, some opposition to that going into some areas of McAllister. So and and sometimes it's because they don't want renters in their neighborhood, which is kind of difficult, because we have a high number of renters in the community. It's almost a a generational thing, you know, people are waiting longer to buy. But also, we bring in a lot of, you know, people that work at the base or the hospital, and they're looking for rentals. And so the more rentals that we have, the more, you know, houses that we have available for those type of employees.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Does the same thing apply to leasing? And is there, you you talked about a fee. How much is that for the permit? Is there?
There is a use permit after review fee. There is a flat application fee, and then they have to pay for the notices and the publication. As far as the building permit, it just depends on, you know, the square footage of the structures that they're putting in there.
So it's various prices, what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, and this includes if people lease as well as rent?
We don't differentiate whether they're going to buy or if they're going to rent. That's not something that we consider in in the development of this. It's just, I think Vice Mayor Stevens is making a point that it may be difficult to get this passed, because, you know, some of them may be rented. So they could sell them, you know, set up some type of a system to sell them, kind of like condos or something, or to rent them. It it's just up to the developer how they want to, you know, develop the property and handle it and manage it.
Councilman Brown?
One more, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So if I say this didn't pass or, and I know some trailers came up before. So if somebody just backed a couple trailers in, and I know you can't do that, I mean, but.
This ordinance does not address that. So it's not allowing, yeah, it's not allowing.
Trailers, I mean, because I've had people when I was on there, or they'd bring up that. You know, they want to move something in there, and they couldn't. So I want to make sure that there's not a hang-up, but it's a different ordinance than they had. So they would come to you, and you'd have to make a decision or deny it pretty much, because it's already in stone, right?
Right, these are, the cottage house is attached, single-family dwelling unit containing a maximum floor first-floor area of fifteen hundred square feet and a maximum dwelling size of twenty-one hundred square feet of gross floor area. And so you have, you know, houses, several houses, eight to ten, maybe, like on a half-acre lot. And then they have to meet the setbacks to the exterior properties. However, one of the changes that we made in here is to allow them to sit closer to setbacks, you know, based on like building codes and, you know, for fire separation. But they have a shared, they have to have like a shared courtyard, a yard or parking, some type of a shared element, you know, because it's a community space. It's a housing development intended to promote a sense of community.
Do we have a lot of those cottage houses in town?
No.
Seems 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 like I remember when we were talking about this originally, that there were some questions about the upkeep of the property. And there, I I don't remember specifically what all came from that.
If you know, yes, sir. In this, in the the development standards in here and what they've got in the ordinance, it would have to show that there's going to be like an HOA established or some sort of means of maintaining the shared spaces. So you would see something along the lines of you might have a fee each month. It's a hundred dollars homeowner, and that takes care of, let's say they have a park there. They would mow it, maintain it, maintain the gazebo, playground equipment, whatever it would be, and that would be included in the actual payment. But it would be an organization that would deal directly with the city in that sense, an HOA. And if it's not maintained, the HOA and then those homeowners respectively would then have issues with, just like any property owner.
Councilman Smith?
I looked to the Planning Commission to study these things in depth and give us recommendations. And in talking to some of the members, I think they fully considered this and decided it would be prudent to put in this element of looking at it after review. I think there's a good reason for that. And I think there's a good reason for the Planning Commission to have some regard by us in the things they recommend.
All right, and Councilman Pritchard?
Is there, did he make, did Vice Mayor make a motion?
Yeah.
Can you restate the motion?
Um, the motion is to approve this, but with a moving, removing the use permitted after review. So essentially, have the have the new codes be added, but remove use permitted after review.
And I didn't ask for a second, so let me go and get a second. So procedural, is there is there a second on that motion? Second, Councilman Pritchard?
I I just wanted, from from listening to the discussion, I just want to make sure that everyone understands what we're voting on here tonight. Okay. The the ordinance that was prevented by presented by the city staff says that this cottage housing can be placed basically anywhere in the city. But you have to get a review process done by the Planning Commission, and it would have to be approved by the city council. Okay, that's as written. Councilman Stevens wants to remove that requirement. If 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 the vote is taken tonight to on Councilman Stevens' motion to approve, you will not need any approval from anybody other than city staff to place this housing in somebody's neighborhood. It won't come to the city council. I support the original, I support the original draft that city staff, that's on the agenda tonight. I do not support Councilman Stevens' modification. Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands that what we're voting on.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
I would basically say this, and then by all means, I'll be quiet after this. I've talked enough. But the reason that use permitted after review is in there, and that so often we don't see any kind of affordable housing be built in our community is absolute prejudice against seeing anybody that might rent in your neighborhood for fear of property values falling. We have lots of wonderful landlords here in town. We have lots of wonderful renters in town. I've been a renter for the majority of my life until I could afford a home. To say that this may or may not hurt your property values, I think, is very assumptive, to say the least. I think that you're going to see brand-new development. I think you would see brand-new structures, whether they sell these or rent these, is really out of the question. What I'm saying is that city staff is fully capable of reviewing or denying this. And that's why I want to make the motion amended. Thank you.
Councilman Pritchard?
I think it's important for this council to, certainly, you know, as you're talking about a use after review process, to think about the concerns of the immediate neighbors and how this development or any development could affect them. But it's also important, and more important, for this council to consider this whole community at large. And, you know, certainly something that we suffer from in this community is a lack of, you know, funds to do our infrastructure. I think that's largely because we don't return enough investment from the existing infrastructure we have. And, you know, if you read through the comprehensive plan, you hear a lot of infill development. And one of the benefits of infill development is we're able to take existing infrastructure. So think sewer, think water lines, think streets. And we're able to add, you know, more good housing to either grow our community or, you know, provide better housing for existing members of our community without taking on any new financial burden for the city of McAllister, you know? Because if we build a new subdivision, or if someone builds a new subdivision on the edge of town, we now have the financial responsibility to, you know, repair that street, to provide the water or not, you know, to maintain the water pipes, the sewer pipes. But this gives us an opportunity to provide, or gives developers an opportunity to divide, provide housing on existing infrastructure that the city owns. I think it's important that we adopt it with the without the use after review because of that. And, you know, I think it's important to expand it too. We haven't talked about that. But I don't think there's been any, or at least there's no interest I'm aware of in doing one of these cottage developments in the existing area. And so the idea, by expanding it to a larger area of the city, we're going to be able to find maybe some more lots, some lots that developers have more market confidence in and get some of these projects done. So, you know, taking out the use after review, it does, I think, more properly balance the interest of this city and this community as a whole to get some of these projects started. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, Mayor? So if we remove this use tax, they only answer to the city. The neighbors have no input. Is that what they're basically it?
That's correct. You're basically taking the cottage house development paragraph and moving it from paragraph C, uses permitted after review. It would then move it to permitted uses. So it then become a use by right. They would not have to go through any type of review process.
Well, I kind of have a, I'm just trying to weigh this all out. I sure don't want any kind of discrimination against anybody trying to set up something. I mean, I do have a problem with that. But, you know, I have confidence, you know, in the city staff, with your department, you know, solving these problems. I want to do what's the best for everybody, for the city. And I'm just kind of getting mixed up eyes right now. I don't know how I'm going to vote, because I'm I'm just feeling that both ways here. I want to be fair.
Councilman Smith?
Typically, if I understand that we're talking about a developer building these little cottages, not individual people doing it. So there's no discrimination that I'm aware of that would happen that way. I think this, you know, taking out the use after review only adds the step of reviewing and allowing homeowners to have a say in it. That's all. It doesn't prevent it from happening necessarily.
Councilman, though.
Is it the developer that is the one that's having the review? Or is it the people that are going to be staying in these cottages? How how does that work? I I'm not really.
It's the developer, builder. Whoever wishes to develop that piece of property with this type of development, the way it is written, would have to go through this use permit after review process.
Okay, could you walk us through a developer? What is he, he or she puts in a bid to put property in, to put, you know, a cottage somewhere? How does that work? Could you?
They just come to us with the property that they may already own, or they're in contract to buy. And they file an application, and it goes to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And the the city staff then mails out notices to all property owners within three hundred feet, publishes it in the newspaper. It's all done fourteen days prior to the public hearing. The public hearing is before the Planning Commission. You know, a a committee of twelve or, and then they review the information and determine whether they recommend or do not recommend it. If they do recommend it, then it then goes on to the city council. And then this body reviews it and then determines whether or not to approve it or not.
Now, is there going to be a large chunk of money involved in either that we receive or don't receive? How is that going to work? How's how's the city going to benefit financially?
Um, as far as like the notices, it's reimbursed. The application fee, I think, is like forty-five dollars.
Who is reimbursed from?
The the applicant reimburses the city for those mailing of notices and publications. But overall, the entire process can range anywhere from four to five hundred dollars. And then just the time to go before the Planning Commission and the city council. Sometimes it's, you know, a couple of months if they can get through it. Sometimes it may be prolonged longer, so.
This is a tough one.
It is.
It is. We definitely need it. But we had, but we also need to take into consideration the neighbors as well, so.
It does go along with, you know, the comprehensive plan. There was H N two recommendation to expand range of housing options. So it does, you know, fall in that, and that was something that the Planning Commission also looked at. This is just a different type of housing to make available in our community.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody disputes that it's a need that needs to be filled. It's just how how much oversight we want to have on it is the question. And and I and I honestly don't know the answer to that myself. I, I have been through the process of getting something rezoned and dealing with neighbors and things like that. They should absolutely have a voice. And that's what we were elected to do, is give them a voice. When there's something that's rezoned, they can speak up on it. This does nothing more than add value and capture our existing infrastructure. I am telling you, I have heard wild things when you go through a rezone about, it's just, it's unnecessary. This is an unnecessary step to go use permitted after review, because this isn't going to be anything negative or derogatory. I mean, it's just not, it's new development, it gives affordable housing for people. This is, I mean, it's an option to do that, it adds to exactly what our comprehensive plan has. So, I said I wouldn't talk anymore, I can't help it, so, so that's my, I want to be quiet, let's move.
They are single family structures, it's just, you know, you're, you're probably getting a little bit more density within a piece of property than you might otherwise.
Well, I, I know, I mean, I, I understand completely, but, you know, someone makes a quarter million dollar investment in a single family dwelling, and then someone comes in and puts four 1,000 square foot houses next to it, it's going to have an effect on this property value.
I disagree.
You're the expert.
I'm just, I'm saying that with the cost of building and development right now, and where it's at, and what we need desperately, Jamie, how many building permits have we had in the last six months for housing, to build new houses?
I looked at it the other day, I know total, the building permits, 142, but I don't know how many were new. So there's not very many new, most of it is remodels.
I have, so I've remodeled a couple of buildings here recently. Every contractor I've dealt with is not building one house within the city limits, and that's over the last six months.
Yeah.
There's not one, there's not, I mean, literally not one, they're all buildings, custom builds outside of town.
Yeah, there's a number, number of them.
And this, and this might do nothing to help that, but it gives somebody an opportunity to actually capture that land value in areas that, that need the investment.
Well, that, see, that's, that last statement is the problem, is that the areas need investment. Because we, we absolutely, there's no disagreement that we have, that we need this. It's just how much, how much oversight we want to have on it, is, is the question to me.
And that's, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
And that's, that's where I actually, I, I don't know the right answer to it, because I can see both sides where someone wants to protect their investment, but there's also, someone else has every right to invest in their property as well.
I'm just, I guess for me personally, I can't see that if this is being built next to my house, and somebody's building four homes that maybe 1,500 square feet to 2,100 square feet max, they're going to be put in very nicely, when you see people do these kind of investments in other parts of the, of the state, we have this going on. You know, they're usually putting something really nice in, and they're investing a lot of money, and it's going to be a nice home, and it's going to be around the park, or playgrounds, or a community pool, or things like that. I can't see that this is derogatory in any sense, personally. I know it can be, there's absolutely a chance anything can be, but I just, I just personally, I guess I don't see it.
Any other questions, comments?
I want we all know another, from all this, if, to vote on it, or maybe it should be tabled for the study.
I made a motion. We'd have to vote on the motion first. I have talked a lot.
Don't make me talk again. You made me talk a lot.
After the outcome of the vote is determined, you would be, you could make a motion if you so choose. So we got it all, everybody in? All right, Cora, would you call it all, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Pritchard?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Harrison?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Reed?
No.
Mayor?
Here I was thinking, man, it's great to get to be the last vote on this, but I, I am going to vote, I'm going to vote no, but then I'm going to make a motion that we, that we readdress this at the next meeting with, because there's some things that I want to look into, the possibilities that, that we can get both done with adding, adding reasonable oversight to, to, for both parties. And that's a mo, that's a motion.
Is that to study it?
To, to study it and bring it back on, bring it back on the first meeting in January, I'm sorry, next week will be too soon.
I want to get a second.
Well, Councilman Pritchard.
What do you, can you elaborate on what you think?
I would, I wanted to look at the cottage, the cottage house development overlay district, and see if there's something that we can maybe put in that, that instead of it going to the planning commission, that there's a, there's a level of review that can be expedited and without cost. Okay, any other discussion? Did you get the motion, Cora?
To bring back at the first meeting in January?
Yes. Would you call it all, please?
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
No.
Smith?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, motion fails. Did, did it?
Yeah, failed.
I think I missed.
Okay, I thought somebody else voted, okay, I guess it passed.
I voted no.
I voted no.
He voted no.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. All right, we're all confused.
Let's hope the rest of the agenda goes a little. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Clifton. Uh, we're on to agenda item number two, consider an act upon a proposal from Waterworks International for the purpose of purchase of splash pad equipment for Leadership Park.
Mayor, Councilman, good evening.
Keep it simple.
Staff recommends to the council that we approve the proposal from Waterworks International for the amount of $37,875 for splash pad equipment for Leadership Park. This is for a new splash pad, it's not going to take the existing waiting pool and make a splash pad out of it. This is one of several improvements planned for Leadership Park, used to be B N Jefferson, everybody knows this park is B N Jefferson, it's now Leadership Park.
Any questions? Councilman Harrison?
Okay, good evening.
Evening.
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, will it, will there be a security camera or some kind of a security over there to?
We can turn, I'll put a camera up, sure.
And who's, who's going to maintain this?
City Parks Department?
The Parks Department? That seems to be one of the issues that a lot of residents have, that sometimes we put in parks, all, all due respect to you and your department, that after equipment and things like that have been put in, then sometimes it doesn't always get maintained the way some of the residents would like it. So what can we do to ensure that that's done?
This is one of our existing parks, this is really nothing new, we're just making improvements in an existing park.
Okay.
And, yeah, we maintain all our city parks, best we can.
All right, well, it has a restroom and all that too.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It does.
Thank you.
That's pretty, first of all, I'd like to thank you for putting something forward, or, and making some improvements. I mean, there are a lot of kids there, and I know you do the best you can, a lot of times, unfortunately, at night, that's when a lot of vandalism happens. And I'm sure it's probably all over town, you.
Absolutely, yeah, it's everywhere. Deal with it every week, somewhere.
I know, I know. Well, get those kids busy, at least they can enjoy it.
Sure, thank you.
Councilman Pritchard, did you?
When will you, when will this project be completed?
Once, once this is approved, this company will provide us some engineering drawings, which they said would take a few weeks to provide. Once they do that, we'll have to find a local contractor to do, to do the installation, so should, hopefully by spring.
This, so does the price include the installation?
No, that's just the equipment.
Do you know how much you expect that?
Got a price from a contractor, he said, or he thought around $15,000 to install it. Now, when the bids come in, I don't know, we'll see.
I've got one other question, I, I think it's interesting that you said a local contractor, so I like, I like that. So why is it going to be a local one, which that's good though?
Well, local contractors can do this work, it's just concrete work, electric work, and plumbing work.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's not complicated, so a local contractor put in our splash pad at Chatty, local contractor did that, so I think we can find somebody local to do this.
Oh, okay, good.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments? Take a motion in a second, motion Council Reed, second Council Smith. Any further discussion? Cora, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number three, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign the contractors pay applications, number five and number six, and assign a certificate of substantial completion of the contract with Built Right Construction LLC for the downtown streetscape project, and accept the project as completed.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, really honored on this project, because it was such a big impact on the, the city and the future, and seeing all the kids down there with all the employee-built structures and everything, and seeing all the kids really being able to enjoy, and the streetscape being, being a platform to really help with items like that. It's not often I get to, to work on a legacy project like this, where something my kids and grandkids will enjoy in the future, and your kids and grandkids. So, project went very well, was done on schedule, actually came in under budget. Once we finalized everything of the adds and minuses, we actually ended up almost $800 under the original bid. And I'm here to recommend we accept the project as complete. October 7th is whenever the substantial completion was established, and there will be a two-year warranty period on any of their work from that date.
Any questions? Councilman Pritchard?
Oh, I like this streetscape, it looks nice. The, I do have one complaint, though. The, the, the streets, the street signs that are on the stop signs on Chautauqua and First, and I guess Second Street, they're really crooked, that bothers me. You know what I'm talking about?
They lean down like that, don't they?
And I mean, it's kind of, it, it seems like an insignificant point, but like, we spent a bunch of money to make it look better.
I'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
Because it could be an optical illusion too, but I'll take a look at it.
I don't think it is, because, I mean, they're out of square, they look out of square with the stop sign, which is, because there's a stop sign right here, and then the,
Up above it is.
Right, and it just, every time I drive by, it bothers me, and I can't be the only one.
This project added two, this project added one at Second Street and down on Main Street.
Yeah, maybe it's.
The one in the middle is existing, that's the one the city built two years ago.
There's, the two they added are the leaning, the leaning stop signs, I would, I love to, I'm happy to pay them, but I'd really like to get that fixed.
Sure, we'll consider that a warranty item if they have to repair.
Those, those, Councilman Brown warranties are coming in handy. I make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second? Second, Councilman Brown, any further discussion? Cora, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Pritchard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item number four, presentation and update on stormwater projects.
Mayor, Councilman, thank you for having me. I'm Oliver Skimbo, I'm the Environmental Programs Coordinator, and here to kind of give you an update on where we're at and kind of where we're headed. So stormwater, as you know, most people consider it to come, you know, from above as rain, snow, sleet, and hail. But we also got to consider the stormwater comes from below, a lot of our roads are half spring or creaking the roads. Those are historically areas that are wet. We have to deal with the year-round ground saturation for those, those areas. McAllister averages 44 inches of rain per year and five inches of snow, sleet, and hail. The lower numbers are from earlier presentation. As of today, we have received 56.93 inches of precipitation, and in the last six weeks, almost 16 inches of rain, so we, we've had a really, really wet time here. Another interesting fact about McAllister is not only does the water flow into the city from all four directions, it flows out of the city in all four directions, so it adds to the mapping and the hydrology of our city. A lot of comments come, especially from older folks that have lived in the area. They'll say, well, 40 years ago, I have never experienced this, this has never been an issue, or even 20 years ago, for that matter. The reason being is in the rural areas, without the development, there's only 10% of runoff. The, the natural vegetation and the terrain absorbs the water. In the developed areas, the urban areas, which is city limits, there's 55% of runoff, and that water has to go somewhere. You got to think of McAllister as a bathtub. When you go to get into your bathtub water, when you lay down in it, that water level is going to rise. So the more development we do, the more water goes to the lower areas and rises. With flooding, we are five times more likely to experience a flood than a fire in urban areas. And we have lots of fire departments around, we really don't have any flood departments. Here, here in our program, our goal is to mitigate losses and increase the quality of life through the city. Loss of life is very rare in a flood, but the economic, social, and environmental damages are really frequent. FEMA states that a house with a history of a wet basement or a wet crawl space has a lower property value of 10 to 25% compared to its neighbors. More importantly, 40% of all businesses or commercial properties that have ever experienced flooding will never reopen their doors. This is a, this is really issue in case we do, do experience flooding. The good news is flooding damage is usually repetitive and has systematic impacts on our community. This does allow us to assess flood risk and map and make plans to mitigate it. Direct damage to our homes and businesses are, are obvious, but the damage to our infrastructure is what we, we don't see. And by infrastructure, I mean with our utilities and our roads. Mainly the sanitary sewer system, when our stormwater floods our sanitary sewer system, it backs up, it creates issues for our sewer plants, for residents, their cleanouts. It gets nasty. For our roads, we're, we're experiencing this right now over on East Pierce Avenue. The roadbed was saturated for so long that it needs to be repaired now, we can't just do an overlay, so it, it adds to expensive projects. As far as the sanitary sewer, we are doing some work over at Twin Cities, and one of our manholes, a tree had grown up and cracked it. Well, back, back in the woods, you never see it, but every time it rained, the water would just flush our sanitary sewer system. Now that we've identified it, we're planning to take actions to repair it. Now, the EPA says that 80% of all our water contaminants come from the city. And our drinking water is rainwater. The goal is to slow it down, spread it out, and soak it in. We can do that by more greenscape to lessen erosion, and not only do we disperse the water, we also disperse the contaminants in the stormwater. We can also, also do it through retention, which allows the water to be collected and released slowly. That way our drainage system is not overrun. The goal in our new developments, if you think back to the bathtub, is that there's going to be no rise. So as the city sits in the tub and the water levels stay for our floodplain, the more developments we do, if we do greenscape, that water level won't change. That way we don't affect our neighbors, we don't affect the people downstream. In McAllister, we have almost 26 miles of blue line streams. In those streams, we have 296 stormwater outfalls, that's where our stormwater leaves our city in all four directions. Now, we are MS4 community, and all of these outfalls, we have to inspect them and test them once every five years, so we are, we are continually checking our outfall and our stormwater quality. Now, this is a pretty neat picture here on the left, the city of McAllister was actually mapped by LIDAR about a month ago. They give kind of an example, the red area here, that's 990 feet. But if you go over here toward the baseball complex, that's 660 feet. So there's a huge difference in elevation throughout our city. The neat thing about the baseball complex is it was, you can't develop in it because it's so low, but by developing a park there, it acts as a flood retention area, so it does, does collect and hold our stormwater to flood again. Now, most people don't think about flood. Now, most people don't think about floods except for when they happen. The city in McAllister, it did flood in nineteen fifty-three, which was our wettest year, which was a long time ago. Not many of us were around to remember it, including myself. But we had a new record wet year in two thousand and fifteen where we received sixty-eight point one-five inches of precipitation. Leading into the canal wall failure at Peterborough Park, we only received six inches of rain that week. Since then, the city has implemented a canal mitigation project where Cliff, Cliff Pittner and Kevin Hardwick went through there and ma- measured every canal panel throughout the entire city. Now, they identified the canal walls that are bow in and risk of failure and we go back every year to re-measure them to see which ones need our attention, which ones need braced and also the canal floor. We don't want the water getting underneath it. So why we stormwater? Uh, this is just an example that you'll find all over the city. There, it's sawing your way. If you look at the picture on the left, it's pretty clear. It doesn't look bad. But as you get closer, you notice the sediment here on the bottom. You notice some leaves have been stacked, some brush have been washed. We go past it, it's getting deep. We got trees growing out of it. We got big trees growing on edge of the concrete. The trees on, on the edge of the concrete eventually will break the concrete, just like it did our storms, storm sewer or our sanitary sewer at Twin Cities. Further back, we have a, a sewer line right here that goes across. You can see the branches that got underneath it, the silt that's filled it up, which adds pressure. And this water, you can see the water line on the side, backed all the way up and saw your way. And this is where it goes out into the canal. Further compounded, the problem is all that trash that doesn't get hung up there goes into our canal system. Now, this is on the edge of the concrete canal. Here we have another utility pipe, but the debris and brush has literally dammed it up. There's a significant water level change here. The good news is we are in the process of designing a repair for this system. This line will actually be lowered and not be in the way when we repair it. This is after we went in there and cleaned. We have removed the trees, we have poisoned the stumps, that way they do not grow back and they won't break out of concrete. You know, this is a return on our investment that we did years ago. Uh, this is on B and Peoria. The interesting part about this is down here was actually bags of trash. There was a Nokia cellphone with a pull-out antenna, if y'all remember those. So that's probably fifteen, twenty years old when that trash was thrown in there that created this ba- this backup. The reason that's significant is the water couldn't throw here through, straight through. So it had it to make a ninety, cross the road, make another ninety and go down the parallel ditch. Now, that, that seems kind of excessive, but it actually backed up two blocks higher and caused our street to undermine. So not only do we have the issue with the ditch, now we have an issue with our roads that need to be addressed. Here on Airport Road, we had a concrete beaver slide washout. Now it's repaired. Sixth and Washington, again, this, the sediment and, and debris. The interesting part about this is literally the day after we cleaned this area, across the street, somebody dumped out a couch and a love seat. It's, it's, the bulk trash is a big issue in our stormwater system. Same area, Jefferson Hidden Value, that valley. When you look through here, I mean, you can't even see it. Now it's opened up. The good, good part about this, there wasn't any trees going through the concrete. If you go back around, uh, the Votech, there's trees going through our concrete beaver slides there that need to be removed and all that concrete's gonna be busted out, repacked and refilled. Finch and Sandpiper. Hickory Bend and Pontywood. We actually had a, a fella come in there and he didn't want us there. He was using the area to dump all his limbs and grass clippings and leaves back here on the side, which eventually were going down into the canal. But now it's opened up and everybody can see what he's doing back there. Just landscaping, this storm drain was completely clogged up. This is behind the Dollar General. This is behind a vantage, this up from the Dollar General. There were actually people, uh, living down here this summer. They had removed the storm grate and we're trying to stay cool down in there. We got them removed, we got the storm grate put back on. Hickory and Legends, uh, anybody that travels that road, when it rained, it would pool on the road, definitely a hydroplane hazard. There's not much fall through here, but once we cleared everything, the water drains. Uh, leaves already back on it, which needs some attention, but we'll be back to get those. Uh, this tree's falling in the canal. The big part about this is even though we cleaned it up, you can still look down the edge, you still see the trees and the hysteria. One of the most difficult parts about the stormwater program is knowing where to stop. Cause when we get into an area, you can just go and go and go, but you're not spreading the wealth and you're not really tackling the big picture. So we have to come to a stopping point at where we go at this time until we get everything caught up and a maintenance plan going. This is on Ninth Street. A mattress was hung up right in another block across one of our, uh, utilities. North Main, the roots of this tree was actually clogging up the old limestone ditch and the rail tracks. I counted thirty-six rings on that tree. That tree had been there for thirty-six years in that area. This is over at North Main. This is across the street from the Pink Buffalo. Another mattress causes this issue. Back here, a mattress had clogged up the storm drain, causing all this sediment to back up. Just a couple of feet away from where it goes underneath the road, it was almost two foot deep of sediment. This is our largest project that's coming to an end right now. It's Tenth and MacArthur. It, it's fantastic. The, the main part about this, the channel spreading, the local resident said that a mattress came down the canal, got hung up in the brush, they couldn't remove it, which created the channel to change and erode property. This is behind Twin Cities. You can see just the, the lack of maintenance in the trees. With these blocks being towed in, we weren't really able to remove these trees. We just cut them off and poisoned them at the top. This is another area in the city that needs to be addressed soon, sooner than later. This is also in Twin Cities. You can see the choke points of the twenty-four inch pipes, which they have on both fences and on other roads, but now the water flows considerably better and they're all unclogged. This is the other side. Now, all that canal from Twin Cities flows all the way to the county on Plum Street, which you can see the difference. This is the other side of the county line. This is still in progress and should be completed this week. And this, the sheer amount of material. So, in a little over three months, we have removed one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand pounds of debris from our stormwater system. That's trash, brush and silt. It definitely, definitely has been due for cleaning. So in those pics, it, it just highlighted a few examples of the projects we've worked at in areas. We have worked at forty-seven different locations through the city in the last, uh, four months. Those projects or those areas could be as small as someone's driveway to large as, you know, miles worth of canals. These projects ranged from as small as a hundred and twenty-five dollars to open up a tin horn that somebody drove over to two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for the Tenth and MacArthur Canal. Moving on, moving in the future to improve our stormwater system, I would recommend that we develop and adopt a stormwater management criteria manual. Right now, we are building to the lowest standards. We can do better. We can raise our standards and just help the city. Next is develop a stormwater infrastructure maintenance plan. That way we can efficient, efficiently and systematically approach the cleanup of our system. And this will also allow us to rehabilitate and improve what we already had, to take care of it. That way we're not, we're getting proactive, not reactive for when something falls, fails. Thirdly, continue the implementation of our master drainage plan, which we have been. The plan laid out twenty-seven different items of concern. Item number four, the mud tributary maintenance, we have completed it. Item number seven, Hickory and Brewer Culvert, and item number sixteen, which is the BM Polk Culverts, those are both in design and hopefully will be implemented soon. Those projects range between eight thousand dollars and over eight million dollars that were laid out in that plan. Lastly, and it's one of the most, the hardest part, making sure all our citizens feel the wealth and, you know, know that we care for them, is prioritizing resolving our problems as they come in. And that's the large and the small, our short term and a long term. Cause a lot of these projects, they're not gonna happen overnight or in a day. They're gonna happen in months and years. I have a little statement to finish up here. McAllister's approach to stormwater has been that of most cities. To get stormwater into the concrete, underground and out of the city as quickly as possible. This approach is unsustainable with regard to our water quality and quantity, at least to the growth of our floodplains and the degradation of our water quality. The answer is an integrated approach that has been highlighted here. With stormwater detention, to mitigate the increase from hardscape and development, paired with a no-rise approach to our floodplains and stronger regulations. The key to this combined approach is recognizing that the quality and the quantity of our water and life are linked and must be addressed together. It is a community effort and it all starts with us here and with the citizens out there. And what, what we do and what we press forward to directly affects our quality of life. That's what I have for you. Any questions or?
Wanted to thank you and your crew for all this work. You know, when we passed that stormwater fee, we had a lot of kickback on it, but how much do we make from that every month? That's what's funding you, right?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm not sure what comes in right now. I know the last increase will be this July, which will max it out to five dollars and the funding should bring in a little over a million dollars a year.
Currently, we're at about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year. It's going for good cause.
Thank you.
Glad to see you, the, the workover by Twin Cities because that, that issue was actually, what was happening there is the stormwater or the, the sanitary sewer was getting overwhelmed and flooding the, the, uh, the actual sewer to where when it, when there's a, a strong rain, there, those people in the houses on Robin and, and Cole in that area couldn't, I mean, they had no, they had no sewer system essentially.
Yes, until that water went below the.
Yeah.
The hole in that storm drain or that.
Back in the water up into that, into that housing district.
Yeah, so it, uh, it's, it's not only something that, that's good for, you know, taking care of that kind of water. It's also a, uh, health, uh, safety issue as well.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilman Pritchard?
We talk about developing higher standards, um, under the, you know, stormwater management criteria manual. What do you mean?
Uh, for example, we have a lot of oil and gas in the area and right now they can basically drill and build anywhere. It doesn't matter if it's a floodplain or wetlands or not. They can do it wherever they want, but in city limits, we can, we can make it to where they are not allowed to build in their floodplains. They can't build in their wetlands, but they actually have to get their base floor up, just like our houses. And if any of you have got, have seen any of the industrial complexes, there's, you know, oil and trash on most of them and that makes it harder to get into our stormwater system.
Councilman Harrison?
Thank you so much for your work, Mr. Skimbo. I've got two, uh, questions. Does the bomb detonation impact any of the stormwater underneath there?
Not that I'm aware of.
And then also you said there were people in the canal. What happened to that is?
There were.
Did they get arrested or what?
There were signs of them. Uh, we actually went in there and you could see, you know, they had, you know, tulip trees and bedding and things. We never actually saw them in there. But we removed their stuff and, you know, hollered down. That, that's a, a big, big area. Big box over through there.
Now, was this the dollar store that's over there on Electric?
Yes.
Thank you. So that's all taken care of now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Harrison, I can ask, answer a little bit about the bombs.
Okay.
The way, the way the bombs are, are detonated at the, at the plant, they're not, they, they're not, they don't cause seismic waves, they cause atmospheric waves.
Okay.
They're, they're blown up and not down.
Okay.
So whenever things are being moved, it's not being moved by the ground shaking, it's being moved by the air moving.
Oh, all right. So it's not.
Didn't we just have an article?
Yes.
Yeah, but if you read the article. But if you read the article, it was actually going up and bouncing off the atmosphere and coming back down and that's what we gave the reading. We just, we had lunch with the. I had lunch with the Colonel. Any, any other questions or comments? Vice President Stevens?
I talked to, uh, Mr. Connor. Have you been speaking to him about a, a bridge over on Brick Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any idea when you guys are gonna be getting over there to that?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I, I just spoke to him, I believe Monday was the first time I spoke.
Okay, he was chatting with me about it and he asked, he said, I'm getting, I guess, some culverts and things like that. So my, I guess I'm saying you might reach back out to him.
Yes, we, we've been in the design phase on that for some time and then him reaching out, it's.
Kind of helping him?
Yes, helped move it forward.
You had something in here and I'm just curious, cause I've talked to the city manager about this before, about impervious area and you can see the difference between more rural and urban. I know in a lot of communities, they're moving more towards a, a green kind of way of doing stormwater and things like that to help mitigate a lot of the issues that you're, that you discussed tonight. How is that gonna affect what you guys are gonna do going forward?
Uh, I'm not sure how.
From, from my understanding, a lot of communities are doing exactly like you're talking about with intention ponds and planting more trees and, and trying to create green spaces, even buying.
Yes.
Like property that's really kind of useless other than creating parks and things like that to help mitigate some of that. Is that something that you guys could see yourselves going forward with or playing a part?
Yes, uh, that, that was actually laid out in, uh, our master drainage plan. It talks about it in there as far as, uh, outlining certain properties that should be purchased and not developed on just for the floodplain storage. We do make suggestions when, uh, plans are submitted, you know, for, uh, small rain gardens coming off of downspouse to help with the water or for, uh, pervious pavement for parking areas, et cetera. Right now, those are just suggestions to help to meet the flow rates.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate all you guys' work.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Skimbo.
Thank you.
We're on to agenda item number five, discussion on the existing water treatment plan and distribution system with the intention of initiating research on the cost of a new facility. Vice Mayor Stevens?
At this point, I'm gonna hand it off to Mr. Stacey.
You know, Councilman Stevens reached out to me to have a little discussion because of, uh, the recent, uh, impact we had to the water system and to the community and to our residents and talk a, a few minutes about what we're seeing with the water, with the water plant and also with the infrastructure associated with it. Want to take you back just a few, a, a little ways. About two years ago, uh, we had a boil advisory in our community and that was due to a twenty-inch water pipe breaking below the existing wat- water plant down where the old water plant was. It was a complete blowout. We got down in there, uh, with all the existing boxes, uh, we could not find, uh, the valves and the different areas that needed to be shut off. In conjunction with that, the city went dry. It drained all of the water pot, uh, water tanks, uh, drained the water system in the city. So we had a boil advisory. That was about two years ago. Uh, last October, um, we had an eight-inch water line break under a swamp, uh, adjacent to Highway thirty-one. Here again, we had to issue a boil advisory due to the fact that the towers went dry and we had areas of the city out of water. Uh, two weeks ago, we had a chemical line feed break underground. We had to shut the plant down in conjunction with that before we could get the plant started back up, get the, uh, clarifiers cleared out and everything. Uh, the tanks in town went dry again and, uh, so, and we had areas of the city that was out of water. I want to talk just a few minutes about the water plant because in July, when we were working with Infomark to redo their contract for the next five years, uh, we had some interesting things that came up during that discussion. Uh, and I want to remind everybody that the original plant was built in nineteen eighty-two. Uh, that plant is now thirty-seven years old. It was designed for a life expectancy of about thirty-five years. Uh, current plant, can't, plant capacity is only at thirty-five percent. We produce about four million gallons a day. That plant actually has a maximum capacity of almost eleven million gallons a day. We've actually had summers, dry summers several years ago. I think we got up to about ten million gallons a day. So it does have the capacity to do that. To replace a plant like that, you're probably looking at a million, a minimum of thirty million dollars. And some of the interesting things that came out of that discussion with Infomark was that with some closer. That with some closer attention, smaller investment. Plant, the actual plant replacement could be pushed back as much as fifteen to twenty years. So that was kind of eye opening for all of us. We've done a tremendous amount of work on that plant over the last ever since I've been here in the last eleven years. That plant is not in that bad a shape. Our problem is our infrastructure. That comes out of that plant. Infomark has implemented a complete preventive maintenance program. It's doing very, very well over the last couple of years. Want to talk about, and I'm kind of going on and on.
No, you're fine.
Want to talk about some of the improvements that have been made up at that plant. And I'm only going to go back to about two thousand and fourteen, but there were. I was not able to research past two thousand and fourteen, just due to the fact that people on vacation and those type of things. But, you know, Infomark, when they took over in two thousand and fourteen, gave us a whole list of improvements. And in put an infusion of four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars into that plant in the form of capital projects. Made it made a good made a significant difference to that plant. We put in a complete SCADA system at a cost of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It allows us to see what's happening in all of the tanks and and be able to monitor that system. We were able to change out and put in variable frequency drives on all the pumps and on booster stations. The significance of that is, is you don't get. The way our pumps used to work is when you turned them on, they went from zero to a hundred and hit hit like that. Now we have variable frequency drives on them that gear up slowly and they start pushing water. So you don't have that huge impact on your infrastructure system. It's a huge, huge change for us. You know, when you look at the filter system out there, we have five huge filters that are almost. Well, about half the size of this room, each one of those filters are. We've talked about those filter systems in the past. It's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to rebuild each one of those. Ex expected life on those filter systems is about five years, which means every year you need to rebuild one of those filters. At a cost of a quarter of a million dollars. Infomark came in and said, no, we don't need to do that. And we've done that in the past. Infomark came in and said, no, we don't need to do that. We replaced all of the, we we were able to. Look at all of the stainless steel drain system underneath those filters. They drained them, looked at them, determined that they were still in good shape. We were able to change all of that media. Bring it back up to where it needed to be, a huge increase to our production. You know, that but that came as a price. It was a fifty thousand dollar price. You know, we we've only built rebuilt the one filter since I've been here. The rest of them don't need it at this time because they're being maintained properly. We put in a sledge removal system, which is the dirt that comes out of the water that has to be managed and has to be put somewhere. That was an over an eight hundred thousand dollar project that we put in place that's working very well today. We have currently, and Gene just informed me today, we we just got the fourth high service. Pump for the system has been returned. So all four of those high service pumps have now been rebuilt. And the fourth one will be installed here pretty soon. Replace the electrical system, the MCC controls. You got a breaker box in your house? We got breaker boxes at that at that plant. Those breaker boxes are a little bit bigger to the tune of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Those have been replaced, which are really the brains of the system. Replace the plant meters, be able to measure the amount of water coming into the plant, measure the water. Going out of the plant doesn't sound like a lot. It's thirty thousand dollars for those two meters. You know, we can we can go on and on and on, but the plant itself is in pretty good shape. Infomark gave us some information back in July that said that with about two point seven, two point eight million dollar investment over the next. Five years or so, we should be able to maintain that play plant very well and be able to extend the life of that plant. If I look back at what their recommendations were six months ago, this is always changing. We have two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the clearwell improvements. That number really to fix that problem out there, if we can't fix those leaks in the clearwell is probably closer to two million dollars alone. That's the stories that we have, the stories capacity that it's at the plant itself. We store a couple million gallons of water out there and that's what gets pushed to the city. Without those clear wells, we're in trouble. One of them is leaking very, very bad, but we still have the other one that's that's highly operational. So this is, it's like anything, it's very fluid, it changes. Where we get into trouble is when we start looking at the city itself. We have a hundred and seventy miles of water lines in the ground. It's the areas that we don't see that keep me up at night. They're the problems that we see day in and day out here in our community. They're the problems. They are the areas that have caused our city the greatest discomfort over the last couple of years in the form of boil advisories. We also have a hundred and seventy miles of sewer lines, a hundred and fifty six miles of sewer lines. I correct myself in this city. Lot of this stuff is seventy, eighty, ninety years old. It has to be replaced. It has to systematically be replaced. You know, I've had a some conversations with Councilman Stevens, Vice Mayor Stevens.
Really not.
And and we talk about this overall problem of the entire city. In January, you've heard us talk about our sewer plants. We're going to be coming back to you with a. A plan to hire an engineering firm to start looking at our sewer plants. We've done, I've done a very good job of ignoring those sewer plants for the last eleven years, and it's time to address that issue. But it's not just the sewer plants. It's not the water plant. It's not the water and sewer lines underground. It's not the stormwater system underground. It's the entire city. And without a a complete. Analysis of what we have. That's going on in this entire city, we're not going to have a firm understanding of what is going on. So what we need to do, just like Mr. Skimbo talked about a few minutes ago, a master plan for our stormwater system. We need an entire master plan for this entire city. And then we have to be willing to implement that plan in the future. So I appreciate the opportunity to kind of bring you up to speed for a few minutes, but there's been a lot done. There's a lot that needs to be done. So with that off.
Thank you. I don't know where the disconnect was. Maybe I emailed wrong, but to be clear on the agenda item, this wasn't. Necessarily discussing putting in a brand new facility. Okay, this is a matter of, just like Mr. Stasiak said. We've had a lot of issues in a short amount of time, I feel like, since my time on council with scares with going dry or almost going dry. Or boil advisories or things like that. And into my opinion, I don't think that could be changed. I don't think it was Infomark. I think they're doing a very good job. I think city staff does an excellent job. I know I've called Pete at five o'clock in the morning and literally eleven thirty at night because I get calls from people that don't have water. And it would be very, it would be wrong of me to say that Pete doesn't answer ninety nine point nine percent of the time. And I think that says a lot about our city, city staff and then the workers that are here. But I think my concern is, as a council, and and Mr. Dazak just nailed it, is that I don't think that we have a plan. I think that there's going to come a time when our water breaks and it's not going to be the, oh, we barely got there and we were able to get water. Or we found the problem there. What there it is. I think there's going to kind of come a time when it breaks and. We're without water. And I mean, we can survive on streets with gravel on them. Lots of people do that and all over the the world. We can't survive without water and we can't survive if we can't flush a toilet. It's going to get real nasty and real gross real fast. But I think really what we need to do as a council, and this is why I wanted to put this on here. Is I think we need to take some concrete steps really towards addressing this. And it sounds like we're making very good manageable improvements as best we can. On the water plant to gain the useful life and continue to grow it. Our capacity is very low, so that gives us a lot of opportunity, I think. But I don't think that we have a plan in place currently to start addressing our water lines and sewer lines. With what Mr. Stasiak said, we have over three hundred and forty miles of just sewer and water lines. Every time one of those breaks, we got to dig up the street. We got to go back in there and cut it. We got to hook it back up. And as soon as they do that and they put gravel back on top of getting ready to put the street back together. It breaks about fifteen feet down the road because the line is still a hundred years old and it's made of clay. We we don't have any way to address it other than we just keep mandating and thumbing things. So what I would like to say, and I leave us up to discussion for the rest of the councils, I would like to direct Mr. Stasiak. To go out and find a firm for us that's going to actually evaluate our liabilities of what we have in the ground. That have can look at streets, they can look at the sewer, they can look at the water lines and they can say, hey, here's what you actually have. Here's how much it would realistically cost and here's where you're missing value that you can capture that back. And and that's, that's kind of where I'm at. And that's why I wanted to bring this before us because I I think it's something we need to discuss.
I think what the the first thing that we need to do, because to my knowledge, I don't believe we have this, is. I don't think we even have a mapping system of where where all the lines are. And that's part of part of the problem as as to why the systems ran dry two times, just because I couldn't find it. You know, the first one, the twenty inch, twenty inch line. My understanding is when they did finally find it, the valves that were there were welded.
I'm sure.
Couldn't be done. And then, you know, the other one was under a swamp, which, you know, what generally when you're looking for a water leak, you go look for water. But if it's already underwater, it's awfully hard to find. But there should be, I mean, I would think that there should be some kind of. Geo mapping where you would have, but where the lines are and where the valves are. And and I think that just doing that would save a lot of time on repairs. Because now it's like you say, you got to find. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Now that was just to say you just have to find the valves. You have to find the line and and. You know, if you have a map and there's, there's not water here, then you have. You have a better idea of how to address it quickly quicker.
Mayor, we probably know we're ninety five percent of all of our water lines or even higher. And and all of that is mapped, our water and sewer lines. The problem that we're getting into is the valving system. And I'll give you a perfect example, you know, Strong Boulevard has been opened up now for what, a month? Got a big hole in the middle of it. The interesting thing that happened down there is we couldn't get the water off down there. And I had Infra Infrastructure Solutions out there, engineers, I had. All those people out there on a Saturday. And what we finally were able to figure out is somehow. In the middle of the street, a block down, we had concreted over a valve. So we are in the process and we've been in that process for at least six or eight months. We have two individuals that are going out probably twenty, twenty five hours a week. And we are actually GPSing those systems right now. That doesn't solve the problem of we need more valves in the ground. I can tell you that. And the valves that were there in the ground haven't been exercised, which means they may be stripped, they may be.
Hundred years old.
They're a hundred years old. They're a problem. But we need a maintenance program also.
Yeah, and and this is, this is realistically why I say all that. And I know that we've all experienced it. We all live here. We get calls from different people that they need water. Whether it's to bathe their baby, to grow a crop, to do lots of different things. Because this last water break, I had everything in between with Thanksgiving, and I know that you guys probably did too. But we need to, in my opinion. Look at really what we have because those are liabilities. We have to maintain them. And I don't think that we accurately reflect that. At least I don't think I do. Let me say it like that, that those are liabilities that we're going to have to deal with sooner than later. And I would rather us have a game plan and know what we actually have in the ground and find that. And I think finding somebody that can actually show us what our liabilities are. And doing that, and then we can proceed to actually make a plan as a council and go, here's how we're addressing this because here's our main. Water lines. Here's how we can capture value back in our communities and in our neighborhoods with the water lines that are there. Because it costs X dollars each month to maintain the water line from Sixth to Seventh on East Miami. You know, I mean, we we don't have that idea. And I think that would be very helpful because then it's going to reflect on our water rates. It's going to reflect on our sewer rates. We're going to need to know how much we need to budget and spend off our infrastructure fund, which generates two point one, two point two million. Mr. Stasiak just told us that if we have to replace one of those clear wells, oh, there's a whole year's worth of the money gone. And that's just one thing. And I don't think that the last couple of years, and correct me if I'm wrong, there stays that, but I don't think we really budgeted anything to make any improvement at the sewer plants.
We have not at this point. That's why we're. Going to hire an engineering firm to find out where we're at.
And that's what I'm getting at is we don't, right now, we've had to manage so much, I feel, out of chaos. Because we've had liabilities from the past that we've just now got to the point that, okay, we've got them paid down. It's manageable. Our city's, I think, in a very good spot. But it's not if those water lines start to break more and those sewer lines collapse, or we don't have enough capacity at the sewer plant or the. Clear wells break and then we have even more issues. So that's where I would like to see us as a council. This is my suggestion. Ask Mr. Stasiak to go out and find a company that he can recommend to hire. And we can put that on the agenda where we could actually hire somebody and find those liabilities. And find and actually reflect what those are instead of just, we know we have problems. Let's actually put a number to it and let's figure it out.
Get a master plan similar to the stormwater. Any other questions, comments?
So basically, you're wanting to get an analysis, a consultation company or something to tell us where we are? Is this what we're saying?
Give, if I understand right. Give an estimate.
This is what I would actually, I would make that recommendation. There is companies that would do that. And and I think that we could do that probably pretty quickly and probably pretty easily, that we could find one of those that would actually come in and look at that and say, here's what we're looking at. There's lots of communities that do this, and I think this could be a really good point for us to pursue this.
The other question, how much do you think that would cost or do you know?
I I can't. Well, I would. I've my assumption is nothing's cheap when it comes to doing anything with the city because they find out it's a city and.
Right.
Of course, we're loaded. We're, we've got a gold vault somewhere. My guess, though, is anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand. And maybe that's true, maybe that's not. I don't know. Maybe it'll be less. That'd be wonderful. But my assumption is that it's going to cost a lot because we're going to have to bring people in and they're going to actually map it. But I think working with city staff, they're going to get a real good idea of it real fast and we can get it done.
Thank you.
Give you just a ballpark, and this entails quite a bit more than what than what Vice Mayor Stevens is talking about. But the stormwater master plan was in the three hundred thousand plus range. But of course, they're doing floodplains and all that as well, not just, not just. So I I would, I would guess it would be the one to two hundred thousand would be my guess.
Possible so.
What, I'm sorry, what amount did you say?
My, it's a guess. It's a complete. One to two hundred thousand.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Pritchard?
I'm fine with doing this, but, I mean, I don't want to do it if. It's kind of backwards, but I feel like we've got to get committed to making it so that we can drink our water. Like this is just. From my perspective, this is completely, you know, this is just completely unacceptable. That I and the rest of the citizens of this community and the business owners here don't have confidence. It to drink our water. I mean, we've issued just this. You know, just in the last few months, multiple boil advisories. And that is very, very, it's it's unsafe, it's disruptive. And this community, this council, I think. I mean, we need to know how much it's going to cost, but my thing, but when we figure that out, we need to get committed to fixing it. I mean, we've got the existing infrastructure fund. Maybe we need to be spending more money. But the truth is, is we're probably going to have to. Create additional revenue or reduce services. And I mean, that's the, that's the thing we should be thinking through right now. Both of those options are. Bad. And that's, you know, and that's why when we're having a discussion earlier about. The cottage housing, which, you know, these two may not seem connected, but they're entirely connected. Because, you know, we we can get an estimate from somebody about what it's going to cost to fix our water distribution system. But I think we're going to be surprised at how large that number is. And it's because we built a very, very big city. It takes a lot of miles of pipe to get me my water and to get everybody else their water, to get the sewer away from us. And this council is going to have to make some hard decisions that are likely going to involve, you know. Some mix of increased revenues, whether they be taxes, fees. You know, charges for services and or decreases in services. And, you know, I don't, I don't like any of those options and it's not going to be an enviable thing. But, you know, I don't know that I've done a good enough job since my time on council of talking about this. But this is a very, and sometimes I forget about it because I turn the tap on and the water comes out. But man, when it doesn't, it is, it's, you know, it's scary. And I mean, you know, I'm somebody, I I don't think I'm unique, but, you know, I've got a young baby at home. And not being able to have water is really a really struggle. And, you know, for people like that, for elderly people, people trying to run businesses day in and day out, they rely on water. So it's something that we need to, the time is past for us to get serious about this. Not that we're not, but get more serious.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Alright, in that case, we will move on to uh new business. Uh, any matter not known or which could not, or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to time of posting the agenda in accordance with section three one one point nine, title twenty-five Oklahoma State statutes. Mr. Dazak, do you have any new business? In that case, we'll move on to city managers report.
Just a reminder that um we do have a council meeting next Tuesday. Uh, we'll have a special meeting at five thirty with the audit and finance. Uh, and their recommendations on the audit, um, it's going to be important that we have everybody here so that we can accept that annual audit and have it completed by December the thirty-first as per our charter. So then we'll have a regular meeting at six o'clock after that. I think the only item on that meeting right now is to accept the audit and also a financial update for, for the month. So uh, it shouldn't be a very long meeting. I want to just take a second to uh, uh, give accolades to not only the Parks Department, that's who everybody tends to focus on when you look at Carl Albert Parkway and also the things that happen downtown. But the entire employees of the city of McAllister, uh, what you saw happen downtown on Choctaw and over in the farmer's market and everything was the entire city, each employee, uh, taking their own creative ideas and taking those ideas and running with them. It was a tremendous experience, a tremendous uh opportunity for the community, I guess, I don't know, I'm kind of lack of words right now. I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, we've built some, some tremendous bridges here in the city because you saw uh different groups building different sections. There were sixty-two locations that were put together down on Carl Albert or down on Choctaw Avenue. That was sixty-two groups that were made up of four or five people that did not work with each other in the city of McAllister. We purposely put people with other departments so that they would get to know what other, other individuals did. And the create, the creativity that came out of that and the inspiration that came out of that is all reflective of what's down there on Choctaw right now. Uh, I think they did a tremendous job. Um, I would say the bulk of them had a hell of a lot of fun and it was a great experience. Uh, I couldn't be prouder of the two hundred and twenty-five employees of this city and what they, the gift that they gave to this community. So that's all I have, Mayor. And also thank you guys for funding it.
Remarks and inquiries by the council, Councilman Smith?
Yeah, in the interest of transparency and full disclosure, I have an information bulletin for immediate release. I want to remind our citizens, an important election for city offices will be held a short forty days after New Year's on the eleventh of February, twenty twenty. Some folks think this could be the most critical city election in at least a decade. Officers of mayor and council seats for Ward one, three and five are to be decided. Happily, I'm not often the subject of rumors, but one recently caught my attention. Some local authority figures have declared that I am prevented from running for the Ward one council seat again due to term limitations. Like many rumors, this one is false. I'm not yet term limited and plan to file for the Ward one council seat next week. I'll be honored to serve my warden city again if the voters choose to reelect me.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Mr. Dazak, just to reiterate, thank you to the city employees and all that they do beyond just Choctaw, but all the stuff that they do that's, maybe they don't get accolades for. That's it.
Mayor, like uh Councilman Smith, uh, somebody has spread the rumor that I'm also not eligible to run again. I am, you know, I do plan on running third ward again, but it'd be filing on Monday.
Councilman Brown?
Well, I want to say, yeah, just looking at downtown and all over the city, for those of having some, you, you can go around and look at night, it's a beautiful, beautiful, I mean, decorations, it's unbelievable. And I've had some people tell me they don't even live here, that have been here, that was really impressed. So I want to say congratulations again to the cities and city managers getting these guys and getting your crews together and you did a great job, A for me. And al- also now, the basketball season has just started and I know everybody may not want to come out at night, but I watched them play Hugo the other night and of course we had them for a little bit and it kind of slipped away. But old Will Holloman, he's, this is his first year to coach. And uh, I think if you came out, you'd be really impressed.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison?
I'd like to reiterate what everybody else has said to uh, to Mr. Stasiak and to the city employees. Thank you so much for making our, uh, it almost looks like a hallmark uh scene downtown. So thank you so much for that. And uh, I will be having a holiday event, hot chocolate and giving uh books to the students or young people at Ward, in Ward uh five at J Henry's barbecue this Saturday, December the fourteenth, between one and uh, between one and two. And I would like to give a shout out to Mrs. LG Green, she will be one hundred years old. And I don't have any rumors Ward five, so it's open for anybody who wants to file. Thank you.
I've got a few things.
Talk about the Festivus Bowl, okay? That was my build, okay?
I am going to talk about the parade though. With the, with the streetscape, uh, in conjunction with the decorations that are down there, I think it added tremendously to the parade. I was looking online the next day, uh, it was broadcast by Bravado and there were people all over the country checking in that were watching that. I saw California, I saw Florida, I saw Texas, it's, it's, I mean, I'm sure they have a tie to McAllister. It wasn't, you know, we're not competing with Macy's or anything, but, but it was kind of nice to see that. And uh, and it was a lot of fun and I, I stayed around until it was over. And when it was over, there were still people going up and down, having their pictures taken in the, in the cutouts on Choctaw. So it's, it's been a really incredible thing for the city. This coming Saturday at eleven o'clock, there is uh wreaths across America will be at the uh, uh, Oak Hill Cemetery. It's a uh, uh, they, they do it every year and they do it in conjunction with uh the wreath ceremony in DC. They do it at the same time. And each, each branch of the service is honored and has a wreath and all of the member, all of the people that come to the, the ceremony that are a member of each service lineup behind their wreath. It's a very, very nice and very uh, gracious thing that gets put, gets done. And they always have a uh military uh associated speaker. So if, if anyone has a chance to do that prior to going to Councilwoman Harrison's uh J Henry event, then uh definitely stop by there. We had, uh, we had the groundbreaking for the shopping center a couple of days ago. It's about two hundred, two hundred and fifty people showed up for it. Uh, it, uh, it went really well. The developer talked about, about a fourteen month uh, uh, build. The, the builder talked about a ten month build, so it's going to be somewhere between ten and fourteen months. And uh, hopefully, hopefully the ten, the quicker they get open, the quicker things get moving. And then lastly, uh, this is specifically for the council, their Congress of Mayors will be the seventh of February in Oklahoma City. And it's not, it's open not just to mayors, it's open to all uh council members and things throughout the state. And it's very interesting, you go up and you uh, you create legislation that in a committee and then it goes to the entire body of the Congress of Mayors to vote on. And if it worked, if it does pass that, then it's passed on to the legislature as, as model legislation that we would like to see enacted. And uh, I'm, I'm going to be the chair of the municipal finance uh committee up there. And uh, I know last year Councilman Brown came up, so and said, anyone, anyone that is interested in it can do so, but you do have to register by a certain date, so. With that, we will recess the council meeting and I would take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from the November twenty-six, twenty nineteen regular meeting, Council Airport Authority, confirm action taken on city council agenda item B, D and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corvage, Colorado, please.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries, I now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from November twenty-six, twenty nineteen regular meeting, McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on city council agenda item B, C, D and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Reed, second Councilman Smith, any discussion? Corvage, Colorado, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and uh, the motion carries, uh, we will reconvene to city council meeting and take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Reed, second Councilman Smith, any discussion? Corvage, Colorado, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we're adjourned, thank you guys.
Thank you.